Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday. The lastest Monday in April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, six o'clock P M. We're here in the Select Board Conference Room. This meeting is being held in a hybrid fashion, is being recorded. If anyone is recording the meeting, please make it known to the Chair. Or the Vice Chair. In attendance tonight, myself, Doug Mogul, Vice Chairman Jason Perron, Clerk Diane Gale, Acting C A O Robert Landis, Assistant C A O Nadine Signoni. And that's it for us tonight. Okay, let's start with the pledge. Celeste, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Six o'clock, public comments. If anyone has anything they'd like to address to the Select Board that's not on our agenda tonight, now is your opportunity. Anyone in the room? Seeing none, anyone on Zoom? Okay. Six oh five P M. Discussion with Attorney Coyle, Finance Chair Mister Dee Dee, Town Moderator Celeste St. Jox to finalize Town Warrant article for town meeting.
Version five.
Version five. Okay, so.
We want to start. We want to start with the special.
Our wants to record.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, yes.
Because I think there's the, the, the question that come is start time of the meeting.
Yep.
We had a start time of six o'clock for the annual. And the special has a start time of six fifteen P M. Typically, we do the special before the annual.
That's correct. It's backwards.
Yeah, we passed the bylaw that allows us to schedule the annual town meeting no earlier than five thirty P M.
Yep.
So. Not sure what time we want to start the annual. And then we can back into the special or vice versa.
What did we agree to last week?
S T M six fifteen, A T M six forty five.
Six thirty, I thought. That's what I thought, six fifteen and six forty.
Celeste suggested, I'm sorry, Celeste suggested six thirty.
That way we're not wasting time. I don't know how many articles are on the special, but I mean, usually it's like a ten minute thing.
When do you want to start the special?
Six fifteen.
Six fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
We might start the annual a little bit late, but I don't think we'll have started if late in six forty five. I think we'll start at like six thirty five.
Perfect.
My head, that's my thoughts. We're not standing around for ten minutes waiting.
Right, we voted S T M six fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So relative to the contents of special town. These are. I didn't have any issues with any of the the warrant articles contained on here. And it's really just end of the year housekeeping stuff like we talk about, or like we do every year. Cleaning up fiscal year or twenty four before we move into fiscal year twenty five.
I don't.
The only one I have is on my computer.
Yeah, I'm looking at it on my phone.
I see.
I, I maybe I didn't see it. Oh, all right, just go look at it.
Want me to read it? Yeah.
I think.
It was in an email earlier today.
Yeah.
Oh, fancy. There we go. Look up. Take her up there, Celeste.
I can read without my glasses.
I can get it later. Right here under this, I just thought I'd save it.
Okay.
My glasses.
I'm doing this with up close. Everyone else is like. I can read that fine.
Five.
Oh, okay.
It's one of the few things I can read without glasses.
There you go, Celeste, larger.
Okay, just calm down. Just wanted to see what coming, what's on it.
Door in your way, Mister Dee, you could. More?
Yeah, keep going.
All right, that's good.
So we're just gonna make that six, six fifteen. That's correct.
Yeah.
And then we'll update the, so V six is gonna say six thirty. Check. Onto the annual.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
So after that discussion, we're gonna change start time to six thirty.
Yeah. I don't think I have the electronic of this one, right?
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. It was later this afternoon.
I got this special.
At three forty eight P M. From Carl.
Oh, maybe I'm.
The only concern I had about the, on the warrant, and I said this, on the last two articles, it's requested by the board selected.
Yeah, I, I've, I've noted that, Celeste.
I don't think it's a big difference.
That from, from John, and I think he took it from a prior version. No, but it's, but all duly noted and those changes will be made. Maybe we should start from the top and work our way down because I just want to make sure. Start with one. I didn't, I don't have any questions or concerns until Article Six. And that's an amendment to the revolving accounts to add an Economic Development Committee revolving fund. But I have no detail as to what order committee or agency is gonna be authorized to spend. What fees, charges, or other receipts are gonna be credited to it. We, I basically need to be able to complete this, the, the chart that's in there.
Okay. I thought that this was for uh, if they receive any um, not just gifts, but if they sell tickets or fees to an event, that they could hold that money in an account to be spent on that, on the events themselves.
So they made you.
And Inga's on Zoom. I saw her.
Okay, yep.
She's on Zoom unmute. Inga, can you hear us?
Yes.
How are you?
Good. I'm traveling, hence why I'm not there today.
No worries.
So that account, we inherited the, the revolving gift account. And those monies that we have in that account currently were from events that were hosted either at the town hall or at the ranch or other venues where tickets were being sold to participate. So I wanted to find out what can we use that account for?
But it already.
So it's already in?
There's already an account that we inherited. And right now it has a little bit over three thousand dollars in it.
Do we know what that, that account is currently titled?
Gift account.
Okay, so they, it's in a gifts account right now.
Correct. And I had met with Laura back in October of twenty three with Jack Cody, our treasurer. And she was going to do some research as to how that account became. And that's the information that we have been given.
Okay.
It was a gift account revolving account is the question.
But it's titled gift account?
I'm saying, is the gift account a revolving?
Revolving, revolving.
That's the question then.
Typically, not. Typically, they're separate. And I think what they want to do is essentially transfer the funds that are in the gift account to the revolving account based on what I'm hearing right now.
Correct. Correct.
So that they can be expended by the committee for and that's what I, what do you want to spend it on? Other, like events or programs or?
It, it could be a blend of marketing material. Prom, uh, different promotions that we are wanting to host in the community. And um, it's separate from our website. We already have a, a line item for our website, but this would go right into our general fund to be able to use um, as we appropriately see it fit, or if we want to keep the account the way that it is currently structured, um, then I just need to know how I, how I can utilize it.
Okay. Um.
Because it's, it's not clear cut.
Okay. So I don't know whether we want to not just try to establish a revolving account now or not, or figure out for the genesis behind this and see exactly how these funds are earmarked.
I'm looking at the, the last report that I got in March, and it is labeled account name, economic D E V gifts.
Okay.
And it has three thousand seven hundred forty three dollars and thirty six cents in it.
So there's no written policy or procedure as to how to utilize it anymore? Is that what I'm trying to get?
No, and a while back, we had discussed authorizing a revolving account, and then this account turned up. So I think we want to have a revolving account that they can use to bring in, you know, local businesses to have meetings or, you know, education programs, things like that, and be able to use this revolving account to charge to participate and to sponsor those events and, and keep them rolling.
If this was already designated to be used a certain way.
One to roll the gift account into it, that would be separate.
Right, and if you look on Article, just if you skip ahead one page and look at the existing departmental revolving annual fund spending limit authorization, so you can see where they are today, some of them. So there's the C O A revolving fund, C O A classes revolving fund, C O A house numbering program revolving fund. Okay, and then they added the E D C one at the end, but the Article Six creates that or creates that um, that account. So. So it would be the Economic Development Committee. Uh, we're catching aim for it. The department is obviously Economic Development Committee. And then, you know, you could look at one of the other ones to see where, when we created those on how they were, what the fees and charges are credited to it and expenses or economic development activities or whatever. Go ahead, Ben.
Knowing those parameters, I can, I can put forth some language in the next version for you guys to review.
And to fill in those blanks on the chart.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. I'll, I'll fill them in and then you guys tell me whether or not you want to change it. But now I have an understanding of what, what you're trying to do with it.
They want to post this Friday then?
Um, this, does this have to be posted Friday or just the special on Friday?
No, both.
Both, right?
Well, no, ju- just the special has to be, but we typically do them both at the same time. I, I'm, I plan on sending something out first thing tomorrow morning.
And then we'll just authorize you to approve it.
I guess, yeah. Yeah, provided there's nothing else upstated there yet. But then you'll have to come in and sign a warrant. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Article seven.
Article seven, I'm still waiting for a number.
You guys must.
Typically, that's included in there.
Good idea.
What is Article seven?
David.
Roadlight.
Usually D P W, I think, provides the number.
Yeah, he's not alone.
This particular authorization comes from Bond Council. So this came from Rick Manley. And then he just waits for the uh, the number to be inserted. So we'll just need to get that too for the final version.
What did we put for Joe?
We, that's part of our discussion later.
Okay.
So you'll have it tomorrow morning, sir.
Okay, we'll fill in that.
No problem.
Yeah, yeah.
In the circuit here?
Yeah.
So then obviously Article eight is gonna be affected somewhat from what you just articulated the budget.
Yeah.
It gets affected, but, but that warrant art doesn't, and I believe that it has been reviewed. Everybody's waited on it and it's received approval. So I'm gonna take that language away to, to be reviewed.
Yes.
Yeah.
So Article nine. This is just the reauthor, the annual reauthorization of the spending limits. And I will put in the Economic Development Fund and with a, a dollar figure for that as well.
Great.
Do we need to voice that dollar figure for them?
Do we need to what?
Do we?
The dollar amount for that fund. For Article six and for Article nine.
Yeah, so typically the, the limit on spending is anywhere as you'll see from five to fifty thousand dollars. Um, or sixty thousand, the inspectors revolve. I mean, if there's three thousand dollars in the account, we don't know how long it's been there, but I would say up to, you know, maybe a ten thousand dollar spending limit, and then we can always revisit it again.
That's a perfect number, Ben.
We're nodding our heads, yes.
Okay. Article ten, Regional School District Budget. That number is correct.
Was provided to us today. That's final now. Um. There is no borrowing for the school this year, which is unlike any other year that we've had no capital uh, capital expenditures. So I removed that and then kind of renumbered things as, as we went along as well.
Okay.
Article eleven. Took some of this language from other similarly situated towns and what, what they're doing. Um, well, relative to the appropriation and transfer of the previously received fund into um, an opioid special revenue fund that we, that can be established under the Special Act or the acts that were just passed. We never established a separate stabilization fund, so we don't need to worry about any of that stuff. Uh, Article twelve, you guys wanted to move up the wholesale water contract before it was at the end. And I think at your last meeting, you guys wanted it moved up.
Yes.
Mm hmm. So I did that. Uh, Article thirteen. I know we had talked about a long-term license agreement. Uh, the law has changed over the years where the board have the authority to enter into long-term leases now without town meeting approval and without special legislation. So I don't think my opinion is we don't need town meeting approval to enter into its ten year license agreement for that parcel or, or for the lease for that property, but if you want to, we can, we can include it. But I think the statute already authorizes you to do it, so it would just be giving you the authority to do what you already have the authority to do.
I have no problem to strike it. Do they want to make a, do you need, do we need to vote on that? Probably. Ben?
Sure.
I've seen a motion to strike Article thirteen as presented.
Motion made.
Second.
Doug Mogul and I.
Jason Perron and I.
Dan Gell.
Done.
And then we're gonna just vote on this at the end, all these changes.
Yeah. That's the sway. There's a link to that. Okay. C P A budget.
Yeah, the new budget. So the, I had some questions with regard to this because the numbers don't seem to add up. But this is always extremely confusing for people, and I think all we really need to do is to establish the total reserves or the, the allocation for the different funds rather than have the, the, this other verbiage, which I haven't seen in other municipalities. So I just want to, I, what I would rather see us do is just confirm with Sabrina, and I think Carl sent her an email earlier saying, hey, can you let us know what, what the appropriate numbers are? So I just want to make sure that we can do that, and with your permission, in, in, in the draft they sent us this year, it didn't include all the other verbiage, and by the other verbiage, I'm talking about the of the article talks about the estimated revenues equalling the state match.
To do is to take that out.
Correct.
Oh, because that doesn't match the six twenty six four hundred.
They're just trying to reconcile it, but they didn't reconcile it in this.
Right.
Okay.
So the, the, the six two six for the six hundred twenty six thousand four hundred dollars is what was I just want to confirm that, as I believe that those were the totals that were provided by the Community Preservation Committee to us to include. It's where the other the balance of it is where the issue came. So that's why I'm thinking we just stick with their numbers.
I would.
And that. Does that make sense?
I see what you're saying. Yep.
Yep. So just everything below the total, we would just strike for the purpose of the warrant.
Right, because it's a future number anyway.
I have no objection. Jason?
None.
Okay. And then Article fifteen.
I'm sorry, Article fifteen. Did, I don't have any issues with the uh, the five percent for the um, for the general operating uh, budget, that's typical and customary. So I don't see any issue. Article sixteen, the Allen Treatment, that's been an annual warrant article since we did the bonding for that, and it's, that's just the payment of the, of the uh, the interest in principle. On that six hundred thousand dollar bond. Again, I don't see any issue with that. As well as uh, till seventeen. It seemed, I don't have an issue with the expenditure of those funds. I think it's allowable expense. Same thing with eighteen. So I, I think those should be included as, as they presented to us.
Okay.
Article nineteen. Is zoning bylaw amendment.
Yep.
I received word afternoon from John Goddard that there were some changes that need to be incorporated into this, so that will be included in the version six will be the updates with regard to that.
Both for meeting Thursday. I think we're gonna have to just to vote to accept the I don't see how we don't. We'll talk after. Okay.
Article twenty, zoning bylaw amendment to short-term rentals. Attorney Begley reviewed that. I don't believe that there's any changes to it. And that's in final form. Um, Article twenty one, the acceptance of LaCory Drive and Cody Lane. Uh, there was a typo in the, I think in version five, and I apologize that I um, it was an auto correct from LaCory to liquor, so, but that'll be changed here as well. And then changing requested by the Select Board and D P W rather than the Board of Selectment.
Yeah.
Article twenty two is a temporary easement. That language was approved by Attorney Begley as well. I will change requested by Select Board and D P W.
Where is that? Still Brook Development Corp. And is that related to Article twenty one?
I don't believe that it is. Let me look that up. Let me see if I can look it up quickly. Hmm, I'm just gonna try to find the plan that it references real quick.
It's related to that, right?
I think so.
Well, it is off of LaCory Drive, South Long Yard.
Same page in the registry.
Yeah, so my, my suggestion to the, to the board and.
Ledges, it's, it is off of South Long Yard, LaCory. Yep, and claim.
My suggestion then would be to move Article twenty two ahead of twenty one. Because if the. Cuz if the, if the easement fails, we can't take the ways cuz it's a slow easement for. I think.
I, I think you're right.
And it also improve, includes the money for us to lay out the way to then take it. When the time is right.
Right.
Correct.
That's the, the original twenty grand. That was in there for the street acceptance.
Yep, okay. This is the, I thought this was gonna be the year we put the money, and then the free, the next year we do the acceptance, apparently they already have the. As built and everything that they need in order to lay it out, cuz DPW is requesting it.
Yeah.
And from through via the planning board, so.
What it looks like.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and there's twenty thousand bucks in it for. For the taking, which is usually you have to take the rights away throughout the whole subdivision cuz everyone owns the middle of the street, you know?
Right.
But.
Right.
Um. Okay, so twenty twenty two should be twenty one and twenty one should be twenty two.
Correct.
Okay.
Land donation off of Berkshire Ave.
Yep.
From the Bruno Family Trust, that's thirteen Berkshire Ave. And then the, there's the description in that as well. And I know Ken Albino's been working on that.
Yep. And then. Uh, Article twenty four. Sorry, go ahead.
Is there? Yeah, Article twenty four is a rescission of a prior. Borrowing authorization. That. So it's received that authorization in its entirety. That was received by bond.
Correct. We never borrowed the money, so we're gonna rescind the authorization of borrow.
Yep, I get that, I'm just looking back at. That's the final one, that's. So in version three. We had Revere Road, where'd that go?
See, I think that's where we got confused.
They said that that was not.
That it was left.
Revere Road is, was not uh, ready to be done as of yet because Attorney Begley. Indicated that we're still waiting for a, a. Plan relative to. A portion, I believe it's the northerly portion and the dimensions associated with uh. That particular piece.
Okay. We'll get there eventually. Cuz we already spent the money on the survey and anything else for that. Well, it'll keep, come up on the next special if they get her done.
Oh, gonna get a few pings on that one.
Okay.
Good thing there was no hurrah party yet. Okay.
And I think that's it.
So we need a vote to accept all these changes.
I think we need to. When do you think you're gonna get these back to us, Ben, the final?
Um. I'm gonna have it back to you guys tomorrow morning. With the. The big one. And I just gotta, I gotta look at the email from John Goddard just to make sure. That it was final to have. One. If you can bear with me just one second, my computer's just being a little slow. Um. But there was one comment in here that I just need to confirm with Attorney Begley. Because he says that he attached. An updated version that ref- that reflected energy. Minor revisions suggested by Attorney Begley. And then in brackets, he has mark B, this version does not reflect content edits to subsequent or to sub sections. A three, A four, or C one B at the current time. So I don't know what he means. By that, and whether there may be further revisions to those two sections. So. I need to confirm with him. As to what that means. And I'll include that in my email tomorrow. Hopefully he'll respond. Just to see what it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh. Attorney. Coil. Do you think it would be prudent for us to schedule a meeting of the Select Board for Thursday? With no other, nothing else on the agenda but to sign the warrant?
Yeah, I think, I think it would probably be good just cuz we're. We may have some more, some. Changes that may be more substantive than not, and I mean typically I would say close it in. But I don't know what, I don't know if these changes are gonna be substantive or not, so I think. Having another meeting, if it's possible, would be the best.
I just, you know, I don't want anyone to be surprised, we're gonna, so we'll post for Thursday.
Okay.
Time to be determined, but it should be a. Dare I say a brief meeting.
Yeah.
To, to execute, approve and execute the warrant for posting for Friday.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's proven.
Hmm. Guys, you're gonna have to come in to sign it anyway, might as well have a brief meeting.
Why not?
But.
Okay.
Good.
So do you guys think you'll sign on the, on that date then?
I'm sorry, sir.
Reason why I ask. You, do you think you'll sign on? A second?
Yes.
Okay, cuz I just need to change that too, cuz we usually put the. That you guys sign. We all change, cuz I, it's on for the third, so I'm gonna change it to the second.
Okay. Well, usually it's the posting date, right?
Correct. Well, given our hand, given our, under our hand at Southwood, this blank day of May, that's when you sign it.
Okay, and then it'll post, yeah, gotcha.
Okay. Okay. Any, any other questions you guys have for me?
You got the um, HSIC. Contract one.
That you forwarded to me, yes. Is that the one you're talking about?
Yep.
Yep, I got it. Working on it.
Fantastic. Ryan Sullivan's in the room, so I figured I at least get a plug in.
I like it.
Okay. Anything else for Attorney Coil, going once, going twice. Sold. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Talk to you guys soon.
Thank you. Hmm?
You didn't call for public comment, did you?
Sure, first thing.
Oh, I didn't hear them.
But because we were running so far ahead of schedule. And I see members of the parking wreck in attendance. Uh. You guys wanted to talk on a public comment, right?
That's fine.
Sure.
Cuz I don't think we had a.
No, you don't have any.
Come on up. So. I ran into Dave yesterday on their, on their rail trail.
Where everybody runs.
So we were moving some mulch and having some good time out there, so.
It was nice and warm.
Nice and what?
Warm.
Yeah, it was nice out yesterday. Floor is yours.
What's that?
The floor is yours, what do you wanna talk about?
No, I just, um, watching the meeting from last week on the. DPW park and rec maintenance thing, I. Think that it would make sense to have some more discussions about it, I saw Randy's idea of it, but. Nobody really contacted us about it. Randy's been helpful over the years when we've had culverts wash out and things that the park and rec can't take care of, or we. I have to call Randy anyways to see what we should be doing and then get money for. Park and rec things. Um, but. I think the biggest thing, I think maintenance keeps getting lumped in with us. And making us look bad, and we kinda did a, a little workaround this year, so we're supervising the park maintenance people. And the rail trail people, which we. Have really good people this year, but it hasn't always been that way in the past, sometimes you have to prod them a little bit, and I think. We really need somebody. Like day to day overseeing that type of thing, so that might be worthwhile. Discussing that with Randy a little bit. But I know when we had talked to you earlier this year, we said we would take care of things this year, so the park would run smooth and it's. Pretty much up to speed now with all the. Maintenance and the people working there are really good, and it's, I think it's gonna be a good year, but. If the same people don't come back next year, it, it could be a different situation. Um, I think as far as having, say, Kara and the Park and Rec Board under DPW, I. Talked with other members, I don't feel that's a good idea, Kara's. Good down at the town hall, I mean, dealing with. Everybody she has to deal with between baseball teams and. Everything else, I mean, people know where to find her, and, and I think we should. Be reporting to her if we have to get things done. And vice versa, if people come to her, she usually sends out a text or an email to get a quick answer from. One of us, but I don't think that should fall under DPW and have another. Layer of supervision, cuz I think as the board as a whole, I think we. Do a pretty good job in town, I mean, having the rail trail and overseeing Wally Park. And the beach for the, the budget we have.
Hmm.
I think another discussion we need to have with Randy is um, the tree situation, I know three years ago, we. Set this up with the whole maintenance thing, we had talked about that. And figured the, having the maintenance person was gonna be our solution to everything, but it, it didn't really work out the way we had planned. But I think we need a discussion again about the whole tree situation when they fall. Like, who's doing what, I mean, truthfully, the last couple of years, like every time the trees fall, I don't know if um. Maintenance. Cut them up and left them basically. Right against the edge of the trail or DPW did, but I usually go through on my own time. And during the winter or. Off season when there's not people out there, have a friend at a rail trail or a friend of mine who burns fire would help me. Just to get all the stuff off of the apron.
Hmm.
But I mean. It's, it's just, uh. I, I enjoy doing it, I don't mind doing it, but. I think there.
It needs delineation.
Right, should, should be a better solution, I mean, I think if. The trees were gonna be taken down by somebody taking down trees, it's probably another half hour, hour of work to get the stuff off and trail and throw it in the woods like it's always been done. But I think. It would be worth having a discussion with Randy about all the fine points of everything.
I agree. A protocol, which we kinda had verbally. Committed to in twenty twenty one after that, um, tree fell. At Wally Park.
Yep.
Well, we had that, and then we had the, the rail trail one as well.
Yeah, once.
So then we kinda had that verbal agreement, um, and. I mean, it, it was working, but I think maybe it needs to be more a, a, a set protocol.
Right.
And something in black and white, probably. Um, and then just piggyback on what Dave's been kinda saying, is, is I think we just need that, there needs to be that. Like a liaison person that comes in between, like, say, a care, like, the park, Kara, the Park and Rec Board Kara. And then a, a person like, um, we have an acting maintenance person now is, you know, that position's gonna be filled. That person could oversee the, the, the heavy lifting of park and rec. That comes into play, and that doesn't need to be everything, but when we have the issues with the tree, or we have an issue that requires that. Surrounds like someone had mentioned something in an email about liability. That, that layperson can then communicate with DPW on how that can get done.
And, and just to back up for one second, cuz I, I, I reviewed some of the information from last week, and um. I wanted to start a discussion about this, that's why I brought it, I had brought it up. In the past. And, and Randy was thoughtful enough to kinda put together his thoughts on it.
Mm hmm.
And.
Yeah.
And my, my, so I wanna get out in front of, my point of view is, I never envisioned Park and Rec being a department of. DPW, right, you guys are an elected board, yeah, and, and basically, and, and is. At some point in the near future is probably gonna have a department head that reports to the Park and Rec, you know, you establish policy, they implement your policy.
Mm hmm.
My intention was to have buildings and grounds. Be a division, and I hate the word division, but a unit of. The Department of Public Works, right, so that, that would be able them to bring additional manpower. Person power amongst things, so when there's a storm. You know, guys from the water and the sewer are helping to plow snow, when there's a storm and trees get knocked over, guys from the water and sewer can help. You know, with, with removing trees along the rail trail, when there's a um. You know, some other event, the guys from the transfer station can come out and help the water guys with a, a broken water main. That's where I really see the benefits coming, and really having. In the very definition of Department of Public Works, these buildings and grounds fit that very definition, so. If, if, if. I think it kinda, it just, this, my opinion is, I, I don't envision. Park, you know, Park and Rec having a desk up at six sixty one College Highway, and that's because it's a. A unit of the, the, the DPW, I don't, I don't see it, that, uh, but they're open, open for discussion, but. One of the other things I mentioned in the last meeting was, good, this is great, here's a first pass discussion, now let's get. You know, all the relevant stakeholders to come into a future meeting to start discussing it, and I was lucky enough to run into you on the rail trail, not literally.
You're unlucky.
You know, Sunday, no, absolutely, no, I appreciate it, right, cuz. But for, I hadn't appreciated the subtlety that that it could have even been perceived that way, and if it was. If, if that's what they're, what they're talking about, I don't, I get it.
Seeing where it is.
I think it's more, I don't believe so, but if that's how it's perceived, we need to correct it, cuz that's not how I had. Perceived it.
How about you?
That's not how I perceived it, but if you looked at that flow chart, I could understand where the miscommunication.
So.
And we did say we wanted.
Had everybody come in.
And we wanted to get ready to come back, yeah.
And what's your view of? I know it's just a proposal, but I think it needs to be. Again, like we said, everybody sitting at the table, and then you kind of, um, you, um. Get more specific, yeah.
Absolutely, but I just wanted to, I frankly wanted to discuss the, the general theory, cuz I think at some point. Not, not for this annual, cuz this ship has sailed on this, this town meeting, but in a future town meeting. We're gonna have to ask for a special act. In order to do what we wanna do, maybe we can do it on an interim basis, but to make any permanency to that change, we actually need a special act.
And that's the first step, honestly, right?
Well, I think you can do it on an interim basis, cuz. Because I think you can. But um.
I think we're all set for the season through the fall.
The, our DPW exists via a special act, and it says it shall consist of two divisions.
Mm hmm.
Right, so if we're gonna add a, a third leg to the stool, we need to authorize. Via the, the legislature and the governor that ability. If it's a nonstarter of an idea, I don't wanna go through all the work of doing a special act, cuz we all know that that's a pain in the neck.
Right.
But I think. From a manpower and a resource allocation standpoint, from a buildings and grounds, instead of having another department head in town, that is the buildings and grounds. For town hall, but then they also have a linear park and the town beach and Wally Park. Um, and you know, perhaps someday, you know, another, you know, the DPW building itself and all the other facilities that we have to maintain, oh, and the library. You know, let's, maybe that makes sense to have that be a unit of the DPW and have them take over that.
Discussion.
So, and we wanna bring, and if, and if there's, um, if it's a good idea, great, if it's a bad idea. Okay, at least we floated it and got the feedback to understand how it would work and get everyone's. Everyone to the table to understand how it would or couldn't work. Um, but it, it certainly was not. And, you know, I just wanna go on record to say, it absolutely was not the intent to have this be usurping the. The, the power or the authority of the Park and Rec, you guys are an elected board under. You know, under our. Government here in the town, and no one's looking to take that away from you, everyone's looking to just see how we can best bring the resources to bear, whether it's, you know, I. When we talk, even the, the tree on the rail trail thing is kinda, that's the perfect disconnect. You know? Mother nature delivers you a tree directly to the rail trail.
Been a problem ever since I got on the board.
But then one guy comes and cuts it in half and clears it off, and then suddenly it's a different group's job to complete the task, well. If that is a unit of Department of Public Works, well, they better come cut the tree up and get it out of there too, cuz it's. You know, it's their deal too.
Well, it can be thrown into the woods, it's not like.
You know what I mean, push it into the, yeah, right, but. Finish the job, and if, um, you know, and I know, you know, prior. What is, two, three years ago now, it was the pro- protocol was to call Dave D. Delory to go down there and cut up the tree. Then we got to the point where after a serious storm, the police are supposed to.
Six of them at a time.
Correct, you know, the police are supposed to at least take a, a cruise down the rail trail to make sure that everything's okay. And then report into DPW or somewhere to, or Buildings and Grounds to remove said debris. Right, I think we just gotta get to that point where, you know, it would be. Right? I think we just gotta get to that point where, you know, it becomes much more, you know, that protocol just takes care of itself. They shouldn't have to call a Park and Rec Commissioner at home or whatever in order to come down and execute to a, a protocol that we already have. Right? That, that's just my take on it. So.
Yeah, I would be willing to talk with Randy and fine tune everything. I think as far as the beach goes, I don't think that should be under Randy at all. Only because Kara's done that for years and has a good rapport with the high school. And, and getting a stream of kids to come in every year. So everywhere else has been short on lifeguards and we always have more than enough. And does all the training. I think that's something to throw under DPW and have them manage lifeguards and training and everything. I, she's done that for years and done a great job. We've never been short on staff down there.
No.
Good point. And I think those are all, you know, frankly, I hadn't thought of that. So I mean, that, that's why we have these discussions.
Well, nobody thinks about the Park and Rec, right?
We're all thinking it. We all want, you know, everyone wants Wally Park to be, you know, the most beautiful park it can be, to be utilized and, you know, become an attraction for folks to come and use it. And for, you know, teams and leagues to come and, and utilize those resources. And then, you know, the rail trail, I mean, it's, it's well used. You don't wanna have, uh, you know, hazards on it or whatever else. So we, we wanna make sure that people use it. Same for the town beach. But also, you know, from a maintenance point of view is yeah, I think that's Lifeguards, okay, great, but maybe there should, you know, there is a protocol for other stuff that needs to happen at the town beach, opening, closing.
Those kinda things, but I'm saying staffing it and running it day to day.
That's gonna be part of the discussion.
But I think that's been our biggest headache over the years is like the maintenance things, like going from kinda overseeing it with ourselves and Kara and then going to the maintenance thing and not having things get done and then taking it on ourselves. I mean, it was a lot of work just to get things.
I've seen more than one Park and Rec Commissioner and/or a selectman or two or three. It, it shouldn't, that's not how it should be, right? It should be, you know, once in a while, sure. But I mean, on a general basis, there should be the staff to do it. And if you have a problem with staff thing for whatever reason, if you're part of, if that ma- built, you know, the grounds maintenance is part of a larger organization, the loss of one person isn't devastating to, to maintaining the park, right? Or the rail trail, right? There's other folks that can step up. So you know, I appreciate you coming in. I think this is how we have to deal with this, you know, on it. We have to find a way to go forward and have a productive discussion amongst all the stakeholders. This board, your board, um, and anyone else who's got a stake in buildings and grounds and like, you know, bring up points like the lifeguards or, you know, how else we're gonna do it.
Yeah, whatever. Wanna get into more discussions?
Yep.
Let us know.
Absolutely. Excellent.
Okay, I think we're good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Absolutely.
I done messed up. We're getting out of here early, right? All right. Right, right, right. Acknowledge payroll warrant number two, four, two, two dated four, twenty-three and the amount is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents. Acknowledge and approve open session meeting minutes from four, twenty-two.
Send faxing minor corrections this afternoon. Okay. Okay.
There were you were on the table.
I just didn't know if you have it on in here already. Okay, great. Then I have no issue with this.
What? Make a motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
Doug Mogan, I.
Jason Perron, I.
Okay, and now acknowledge and approve executive session minutes from four, twenty-two.
No question. Make a motion to accept the executive session minutes from April twenty-second.
Roll call vote please. Doug Mogan, I.
Jason Perron, I.
Okay. Discussion items. New business. Ms. Gail.
My folder is so thin this week.
Not gonna say him.
Briefly, new business, there was the Attorney General's um, discussion at the high school this past week on social media safety. Um, which was a pretty good discussion. I was critically disappointed, if that's a word, at the lack of attendance. Yes, ma'am. So, I'm sorry.
Well, because I was interested in this, cause when my, years ago, my daughter was senior, she was on the advisory board and she went into the younger classrooms and did a presentation. Is that not gonna happen this year? I, cause I sort of was curious about, cause I know they did an evening presentation.
Of that same program?
It was, I don't know if the exact program, but I remember her telling me she went into classrooms, younger classrooms. Is that something maybe that could be worked back? Can that way the kids, we, we get the information on at night? Cause I was just talking to another parent on Friday night. She's like, it's so hard to do when kids have activities at night to go to. So can that, so are they gonna continue to do that in the classrooms? Do you have any idea?
I know someone I can ask.
Okay.
About that.
Yeah, no, that's interesting, cause I don't know if they changed the the functioning of how it was done.
I mean, there were four of the youth commission there.
Commission did it, cause my daughter-in-law was on it and she went into the younger classrooms and did a similar present. I don't know what she was at.
I, I don't know if they do, but I will ask.
It seems like they maybe just changed it a little bit, but the kids kinda maybe missed out on it. And maybe we get better information out to the kids if they went back to doing that in addition to them.
Were you there? Did you make it to that?
On Tuesday night.
Yeah. And it's, did I see you there?
No, I haven't seen you. I don't have physical anymore.
Oh, I, I just, I don't either, but I just went for the topic. Um, but there were thirty, I think I counted thirty-five people in the room, most of them, me and my daughter and the school administration and maybe five family units. It was shockingly not well attended. Incredible.
Well, you gotta hope you helped one.
Really?
It's really what it comes down to.
I mean, those parents, actually all of them, I believe, did have follow-up questions and things, so they got something out of it.
So you gotta look at it.
And that's all I think I had on.
Did you wanna address this?
Yeah, but that's old this, well, we can do that now, sure.
Sure.
Um, is that the amended one? No, I did send it to Lisa, but she's out sick. Um, she got all the attachments, the revised letter. Um, and she said she had it ready for signature, but I don't see it out there anywhere, so. I did incorporate the, the chief's comments. He blessed that. So that's, that's the original version, not the final. Nothing changed in the guts, however.
What's the gist?
Oh, the gist is that I, I propose that they actually define hardships and to include um, physical disability as a hardship as well as a physical topographical restriction being a hardship. Because in some cases you can't put a dock because conservation won't let you clear the land to put a dock, even though you have a deeded frontage. Some of it you just can't use. That's a hardship. And then the last component was I, I didn't put any language in, but the chief suggested we put in that they address the um, uncodified soft rule they have about allowing, you know, if your neighbors are in harmony of a, a non-conforming, they let it go, but they need to put some criteria to that, so to speak. What conditions would allow that and how far non-conforming can you go, things like that. But we left that for them to decide if they wanted to address.
Okay.
But suggested that they do.
You won. Uh.
So Lisa will have a final copy someplace for signature and then she'll deliver it to conservation with the attachments.
And if they, you think they carry it on their agenda to, for discussion or?
I would hope so. That's what we're asking.
Okay. So do you, you want us to vote? Or do you want us to wait till we get this next week and vote on it? I don't know when they meet next anyway, probably not. They won't take it next week anyway. I don't think they got this.
Two weeks, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
All right, we'll come back. I did see it. I, and I did wanna talk to it.
We're not meeting last week, right? Are we? Are we in or out next week?
Right now, we're in.
Okay.
We're not gonna meet.
I know we started missing some somewhere here. But as long
Yeah, we should meet the sixth. We probably will meet the thirteenth, but it will be a very, very light agenda by design.
You'll have a final.
And then
By then.
Twenty. Okay.
I mean, you already did last week approve it, just to include what the chief had wanted and all signatures.
Perfect.
So I just needed Lisa to update it and fix it up. I think the letter has.
All right. Any other new business, Mr. Perron?
No, we're in, they're trying to wrap up all the old business.
Acting C A O.
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Old business, table review of liquor license fees for this week, cause I think Lisa was working on that. Yes, no, maybe? Appointments process. I, I gave you the update before the meeting. Um, it's just a website rights issue, so a big scandal, but we usually by the protocol, June first is when the administration lets us know the vacancies that will be on the board. So we'll be in fine shape for June first. Um, and then we, we can go and take a look at that application to see if there's anything we wanna change and clear out the old stuff and get ready to put in. I know we have some letters already. We can start to get those in. No problem. But it's official, it's really official June one that we get that. Uh, L T interviews tentative date is May twenty-eighth.
L T being lieutenant. Who want a definition of your acronym?
Thank you. Sorry, sorry, Inga. Um, COA Director Internal Posting Done. External Job Posting Done. High-speed internet. Last Tuesday, the board voted to send the um, Contract One back to this board for review and approval. Uh, we didn't get it back from the attorney. Brian's gonna be mad. He's probably staring daggers at me right now. So, um, but it was, there was no substantive changes to what we had previously drafted. Um, but Ben has to go through it now. So if either we can cover it next week or I'd rather not carry it on the Thursday agenda, just because I, I, we've kinda committed to just having this signing the, the warrants. So let's cover it next Monday and be able to execute that agreement so that we can get started on all the stuff that we need to get started on for this, for this internet stuff. But the news, we finally got to move on that. Marijuana dispensary. Webpage ho- posting H C process and template R F I evaluation scoring.
Everything's there. People were notified. Uh, I did get communication from some of them with just some basic questions. And if it's okay with both of you, I, I wrote it, I can answer those questions. I can have them directed to me if Lisa doesn't know the answer. Is that okay?
No problem.
Yeah. So we'll carry on doing that.
Okay, land license for American Legion. I think based on the actions tonight, I can just go ahead and have Ben draft that license agreement and send it to them to get that done. Between us and the school and the Legion. Uh, Master General sixty-one, sixty-one A Joint Meeting. May fourth?
Is that the first?
I think that's wrong. Cause A, that's a Saturday. I'm thinking it's probably June. Cause I think June, does June third look like a Monday? So it's probably June the fourth.
Yeah, Thursday, Monday.
How am I doing on my math? So yeah, it's June third.
Oh, cause we had the third or the tenth.
Yeah, so it's gonna be June fourth. Cause the third is our, it's a week of June third, a week of June tenth. So they, they picked the fourth.
Okay.
Tuesday. And it's non-conflicting with, maybe the planning board's not meeting that week, but, okay, carrying on. Uh, T-Mobile hometown grant duly noted.
Yes, only the mayor, Mr. Shield.
Uh, Master Plan Implementation Subcommittee, shame on myself. DPW Plan Incorporated Park and Rec, we talked about that a little bit. Uh, I could have covered it under old business, but I let the Dave and Jeannie had had a great conversation with Dave out on the rail trail on Sunday. Other old business, Mr. Perron.
Well, we talked about the L T thing last week.
Yep.
I am still insistent on bringing in an assessment center. Um, I would like the board to allow me to get a proposal, a proposal, a request for proposal to settle these companies and have them come in ahead of time. Um, I talked at length with Mr. Stevens and um, I'll forget the, the law enforcement side of M R I a couple of weeks ago. As I stated, this is the way policing is going. Um, and in a professional police force, we have to have a process. Um, I am by, again, I am not saying anything negative towards the process that we've had in the past, but part of the post reason for posting is that they want standardization across the board. Um, and this is something I want. Um, I'm gonna spl- plant my flag in the sand right now. And I am going to request that the board put an assessment center in place. And in the near future, I'm gonna be requesting that at a minimum. There be an entry level exam put together. These com- these corporations all put together, um, corporations based on they can come in here and base them on the towns themselves. If it's good enough for the deputy chief of the fire and it's good enough for the fire chief, I want it for the police as well. I'm, I'm, I just, I, I think we did ourselves a complete disservice by not doing it. I think we've got Ted two great qualified candidates as far as chief. And I think we made the decision that we made, but I think we could, our decision would have been a lot uh, what's the word I wanna use here? For lack of a better term, the decision would have been a lot less controversial outside of this room. If we had had that place across us in place. So, um, this is where I stand and that's what I'd like.
Noted. Discussion?
I have to say I'm still a bit muddy on exactly what you wanna get out of it.
That's why I'm requesting that the board have put together, allow me to put together an R F P. Just get some proposals out and get actual proposal or request for proposals out and get some actual proposals in and have a couple of these, these uh, assessment center individuals come in and explain exactly what they can give us. Again, I, I'm not gonna go into the whole expertise aspect of it. Yes, I have some expertise and I am not an expert. None of us are an expert. Policing is changing.
The term experience in it.
No, you said expertise, so. And, and, and I am, I have some expertise and experience, but no, I'm not an expert. So you know, this is just, this is something we should be doing. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, this is all I'm gonna say about it. Like I said, I don't understand why it was good enough and it was necessary for the deputy chief and the fire chief, but we didn't do it for our own chief. The lieutenant is the second in command. That is, that is the guy that's gonna be taking over when as, as Chief Landis knows, when he's not there, Lieutenant Vanish takes over. I want some sort of barometer.
I think, if I may, some people might wanna consider what, if you're gonna go this road is to identify what you exactly want it to do for you. Do you want it to just come up with the particular questions? Do you want it to actually screen people out before it comes to you? Um, you know, I've seen different ones out there that do different things. Are they basically picking your candidate? Are they prioritized?
No, 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 no.
How, that's what I'm saying. There's, there's so many different things. You come from a civil service department that, you know, based on a test, but your people That, you know, based on a test, but your people won through whatever, it weeds people right totally out of the picture. That not necessarily.
Not necessarily good thing either. We understand.
Because it can be very good candidates, although maybe their testing wasn't as high as the other person. And it just seems to be you, you really need to identify what you want to come from this.
What I want is, it gives us a barometer. Like I said, I'm not looking to put together an assessment center to say, absolutely no. This can give us a gauge, again, of where our candidates coming in are, our candidates for promotion are. Again, these are gonna be the command staff folks that are coming next. And it's, it's, it's just a good way to, to determine other than, and I'm gonna say it, we all have unconscious bias. And I don't care what anybody says, we all have it. So it takes that out of there. It, it allows us to say, hey, okay, I gotta take my heart out of it, because people, you know, after our, our decision, there was some controversy. And people came to me and said, look, if I went with my heart, I would have gone another way. If I went with my, with my, my head, I would have gone another way. And that's the way I went. I, I want, this is just what we need to do. You know.
I have to say, I don't think I put any bias into it. I.
You, you're called an unconscious bias for reason, Diane. It's called an unconscious bias for a reason.
Think I did. I have no problem with my decision. Let me say that.
I don't have any problem with my decision.
I am not questioning my decision, decision.
No, but we answer to the residents and, and the citizens of Southwick.
Yep.
Yep.
And I want them.
And some of them are happy with the decision.
That, that, exactly. Some of them are not. It has nothing to do.
It didn't matter. And no matter if, it didn't matter in that particular case.
I completely understand.
Because you would have had a diff, just a different set of folks calling you.
Exactly.
And, you know, like I said, I've, I've had the privilege now of, of I don't know, three chiefs. Couple, few lieutenants, one chief extension that was highly unpopular slash popular, depending on who you asked when I first was elected to the board. And that was commiserating with the chief this, just this past weekend at the pancake breakfast that, you know, in, in my tenure of nine years on the board, you know, a, a serious chunk of the command staff was, was while I was on this board, and a serious percentage of the police officers that are in the employee of the town of Southwick were under my, you know, while I was on this board. And I honestly, I, I don't have a single regret. I did on one, when I first did it, and, because somebody called me, and I thought I had made a huge mistake, and then I talked to a couple, it was being new on the select board when I'd done it. And then when I talked to four other people, and they go, that guy's crazy. So I just said, all right, so I understand it. I hear where you're coming from. I, I just, I think that that's part of the job that we're, we're put here to do. And, and we, and for good or for bad, and I, I was teasing Diane at the end of the meeting a couple of weeks ago in good-natured ribbing, like, you know, it happens to us all. Some of it's after the first meeting, some of it's after the fourth meeting, some of it's ten months in, right? Where you finally have managed to disappoint the entire town with the number of decisions that you make, right? But it.
Not even a matter about that.
No, but I get it. But that's how, that's how I, I view it. And I'm, I think for this process, we've kind of already set it in motion. I, I can see it. I, I actually can see it for more at the, at the entry level. I'm starting to see a little bit more to it, because we don't have we don't, we don't have the reserves to kind of screen and vet. And so you may, you really do have to kind of look at that. And you are making a a significant investment, not just the academy. It's not, it's not dollars and cents. It's time. And so I think that there may, you know, maybe there's more to it to look at it there. But from the, the command side of things, I, I don't know. I'm, I've been pretty comfortable. I'm very comfortable with the decisions I've made so far. And I don't, I don't see it for, especially this round here. And then, then, you know, and any of the sergeants by, you know, when we get to that part of, you know, this conga line's gonna move, right? What, when we, we're gonna get together in, in exec session, and then we're gonna come out of exec session that, you know, hopefully will create a vacancy, which will then be a vacancy, right? So, and, and then you have a retirement, which is gonna create a vacancy, which creates a vacancy, right? So the whole conga line's gonna keep going. But I could see it. I can start to see more of it on, you know, at the entry side of things, is how you're going to, you know, as part of the recruitment part or a part of, I, I don't even know what that process looks like. Because like I said, what is exactly we're gonna look for? In, in, you know, we're in a new world with this post and the lack of reserves. We've had very few officers on the, the department come to us yet that were not a reserve first. A couple now, but not too many. And we've been fortunate that that's all kind of worked out. And I, I don't think it's luck. I think it's, it's, it's good interviewing skill and everything else. But I could foresee much, a little bit more of a robust process around how we get to that. Because a lot, you know, frankly, as a, as a select board member and a police commissioner, what we see in front of us is not always, you know, the candidates that are presented to us is not the whole pool. It's the result of the process that was set forth by the police department as part of their vetting process.
Right.
So, and I'm not even gonna pretend I know what that is. Same thing on the fireside. You know, they send two or three candidates to us to, to consider to hire for one or two spots or whatever on, on the police department. They might have eight applicants. I don't even always know, right? Because they've done their job and, and, you know, whether via background check, whether it's via the interview, whether it's whatever other references that they chose not to go forward with someone. So but I, I, I think that would be, you know, something to think about as we continue to grow. That may be something to look at. But I'm on, for, for this process that we're on right now, I, I don't see a, a need to change your tradition. That's my opinion.
I'm still looking at the fact we have internal candidates that are known. It might be different if we didn't have anybody who stepped up for this. And you know, if you wanna eliminate any kind of bias, we can, we came up with, I came up with questions that were designed to draw those things out of those candidates and have them prove to me there at that minute, that day, that they were my choice. If you want to score those, we could ask those questions. We could ask those questions. And we could score those before we debate.
That's one of the other things the assessment center can do together.
So can we. If you want to.
I understand you want to ask your own questions, Doug.
No, 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 no. Just like we're doing with the marijuana applicants. We're gonna score those independently and then come back together.
But it gives you yet another barometer. It gives you a professional outside assessment.
I'm suggesting we, we know how to rank that. We can do those questions.
I'm suggesting we, we, we do know how to do that, but I'm suggesting we can do it better with more professional input. But, so the only thing I'm gonna ask here, since I've actually never, I would like the, the board to vote on this, yea or nay. That's something we can, this is not something I've ever put forward as such.
I think you make a motion.
Then I'd like a motion to use an assessment center for the lieutenant's positions and the sergeant's positions.
Then the chair would call for a second. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Duly voted, or not voted, because there was no second to the motion. Any other old business, sir?
No, that's it.
I want to thank the police and fire department for, and the police and fire association and the civic fund for fantastic event at the police and fire departments yesterday. Thanks to all the officers and firefighters and call members that came out to support that, to support the food pantry and engage with the community. They get to see all the shiny stuff. And, yeah, it was really great. And the weather broke finally last year, was it this? It rained like you couldn't believe. And also thanks to all the folks that came out also yesterday morning to clean, sweep and mulch the rail trail with the friends of the rail trail. So they've got a lot of, that's a ginormous linear park when you think about it, and a ton of mulch. So thanks to all those folks that came out. It was good to see. Dave D. Delory was out there, and Mr. and Mrs. Sheep. Oh, I forget the young man's name. It's Dave, Dave Spina's son, Nick, Nick Spina. And Mrs. Banish and a few other folks that were out there helping. So thanks for everyone else for coming out. We are gonna go into executive session. We are going to reconvene in open session after exec. To potentially vote on a matter that we're going to discuss in exec. So entertain a motion to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and to reconvene in open session. Move to go in executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to reconvene in open session. And the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to reconvene in open session. Move to go in executive session to discuss strategy, respect the collective bargaining. And the chair moved to go in executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to reconvene in open session and to move to go in executive session to discuss strategy, respect the litigation. Chair declared an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and reconvene in open session. A person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial, or serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. Motion to go into executive session.
Uh, both made.
Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Galen.
Okay, time is eight oh five, and we are coming back into open session. And we have only one order of business. And I entertain a motion to uh, motion to approve the police chief contract for Ret E. Banish, subject to a couple of typos that need to be fixed up. Literally, remove a select board of selectmen and change it to select board.
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Galen, aye.
Okay. As I promised, that would be the only order of business after we came back from exec. I don't see any other business in front of the board tonight, correct?
Yeah, something real quick. We have the, no, I just want to show you something. No, simple, guys. How you doing, Joe D. Finance Committee? We'll be in front of you in a couple of days, hopefully for Monday with the actual budget done. So you keep that smile.
That's a smile.
No, I know. We just, we, we spent a reputation right there.
We're at this on Friday night.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just, you're not looking at numbers. You're just looking at the setup. So it does have the percentage in it. You follow me?
Oh, so this, right.
So this is how the format's gonna be this year.
Okay.
It just, you know, last year was the other way, and you, and you flipped and all the craziness. So there you go.
So this is the format.
That's the, yeah, gotcha. This is, it's almost the final. We need to go over a few things real quick, but.
Correct.
Wow, look at those negatives.
Yeah. And we're gonna change it up a little bit this year, too. I think I'm gonna discuss each department as we go through them. What the highlights are, if there's three, so, because some people just don't.
Yep. People want the highlights.
Right. So I'll point them out real quick, good or bad, and we'll move on. Right?
Great. That's good. That's good.
Okay. So more or less, it's just a, you know, it is what it is. But we're getting better.
Well, you have two.
Because I handed them, it's just the vision. Don't go over the numbers. It's, it's the look of the.
It's the look of it.
It's like an adult coloring book, kids, okay? Just look at the prettiness of it.
That's the second time I heard for crayons in this meeting.
So I need them back.
You don't want to.
Oh, you just gave me two pages out of your.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, so you could see.
You don't want to go landscape and draw lines, huh?
Give me the thing.
Okay. Anything else, sir? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Have a good night, all. Thank you.
You have some turf holding.